Good morning. I call to order the August 22nd, 2023 meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners, and I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick? Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wies?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
I would ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for further action. We'll move into the consent agenda, and today's consent agenda consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of the public forum agenda, approval of county commission minutes for August the 15th, 2023, and approval of ARPA memorandum of understanding with Next Tech for broadband grant match. Are there any commissioners who wish to adjust the agenda for today? If not, I'll take a motion for approval.
For a move. Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve today's consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries four zero. We'll move into the public hearing portion of our meetings, and the number one item is revenue neutral hearing for Celine County, and I would call on our county administrator, Philip Smith Haynes, to give us a little brief rundown on what that means.
In 2021, the state legislature amended the law to require that if a local government is going to exceed their revenue neutral rate, that they have a hearing in addition to their regular budget hearing. So that's what we are doing here today. First, we'll do the hearing for the county budget, then the fire districts, and then we'll have our regular budget hearing. Folks get sometimes confused about what the revenue neutral rate is. The revenue neutral rate is a theoretical mill levy at which the county or any other entity would collect the same dollar amount of taxes that it collected in the prior year. So if an entity levied $1 million in taxes in 2023, and if they wished to levy even $1,001 in 2024, they would be required to have this hearing. In fact, Celine County is proposing a, not just to exceed the revenue neutral rate, but actually a mill levy increase for this year, and that's based on inflationary pressures for the budget. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions, and I encourage the commission to hear from the public.
Any questions from commissioners? And we have public comment, I'm certain. We have one coming behind you there, and...
Laura and Alan Slana, are we going to get to vote on having that rate increased? Because we're the ones paying the taxes, so we should have to have a say in that. It's my money, it's your money.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir. Please state your name and where you're from.
Scott Bonds, 5001 East Mentor Road, Gypsum. I received the mail notice. It leaves things unclear to me. It doesn't say how much the tax is going to be increased. Despite saying that it contains an estimate for my proposed property tax increase, it doesn't include anything that I can see that says that. It just gives current year appraised, current year assessed, which doesn't tell me how much my tax is going to be. As I understand you, this is being done because inflation? Is that correct?
Well, we have to, certainly we have to increase, we have a budget, we have a budget that we have to adhere to for next year, and we've got to have, be able to fund that budget. And the budget that is proposed for next year is an increase, so we have to have increase in taxes to fund the budget.
I understand. I just...
Yeah.
This, I've been paying taxes for 15 years here, and I've never received a notice like this. I don't know if that means that you don't do this every year, but I've never gotten an invitation to participate.
Oh, someone else is going to have to answer that?
Through the chair. I'd be happy to sit down with you after the meeting and take a look at it. This was actually sent out last year, was the first year, so you should have received it last year as the first year that it was sent out. It was a change in state law two years ago, so...
In the past, you haven't had to go through this particular process to raise the rate?
We did go through this process last year, yes.
But before that?
But before that, it was a completely different process, the state legislature.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope that answers your question for you. Thank you.
It helps.
There you go. No one likes an increase in taxes, for certain. Anyone else wish to address the commission? If not, I think the process now is for a roll call vote. Or do we, pardon?
If you declare the public hearing closed, and then we'll introduce, have an introduction of a motion and...
At this point, I do declare that the public portion of that hearing is closed, and we will bring it back to the commission for a roll call vote, and I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion, we adopt resolution 23-2388 as presented by roll call vote.
Second. That's not on my agenda, but thank you for doing that. And it's been moved and seconded that we approve the...
Go to your second page here.
Roll call vote here. Sorry about that. And I would now ask that the clerk calls the roll. Sorry.
You're fine. Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here, aye.
Commissioner Wies?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
So that motion does pass four zero. And my apologies for the confusion. We'll move to the item number two, which is the revenue neutral rate hearing for rural fire districts two, five, six, and seven. And I do declare that the public hearing is now open, and any commissioners have any comments? If not, I will ask that, are there any comments from the public? Step right up.
I'm sorry, I...
It's all right. Please state your name again for the record.
Scott Bonds, 5001 East Mentor Road, Gypsum.
Thank you, sir.
I thought I asked last time, and because of my nervousness, I didn't persist. There's nothing in here, and nothing that's been said today that talks about the, a number for how much the tax is going to increase. Can you not reveal that? You're just saying you want an increase, but...
I'm going to defer to the administrator for that. I'm not certain what I'm looking at here.
So, the tax rate is proposed to be set for the county at 39.901 mills, and then for each of the fire districts, there would be a separate rate, so let me get to that page so I can see that. So for fire district number two, the proposed tax rate is 6.026 mills. For fire district five, it is 5.530 mills. For fire district number six, it is 3.692 mills, and for fire district seven, it is 4.866 mills. And of course, we should note that everybody is affected by the county budget, but only the folks who live within a particular fire district are affected by the mill levy for that particular fire district.
Mr. Chairman, I might be able to help you here. Is it not, I'm looking at this proposed property tax increase, there's a column that says proposed increases? Is that not the question you're asking?
I was hoping for more of a layman's understanding, like percentage, rather than mills.
And it shows a percent, and it also shows the exact dollar amount.
So, I, so, the county's overall budget is proposed to increase 7.77%. How that impacts each individual property owner varies depending upon their assess, their appraisal and assessment. So, the notice should, that percentage will vary slightly based on the estimate for that particular property. Jamie, you want to?
So I'll add something, just, so on the notice, in the middle section, there is the revenue neutral rate in that first set of columns, so that's the revenue neutral rate for all of the different taxing entities where your property is located. The middle column is, excuse me, is their proposed, so what they're proposing to pass this year for next year's budget. And then the last two columns has a percentage and a dollar amount. So that's the dollar amount that it's going to affect your property. And then if you kind of want to see what you paid last year, down at the bottom, in the bottom left of the page, is your prior year tax, so you can see the difference in those. If that helps.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that better.
Do you have a copy of the agenda?
Not the agenda, I have this notice that came in the mail on the revenue neutral rate.
Oh, that's another page, and I don't have that one. I was looking at these other, okay, thank you for your question, and hopefully we got you answered. So where are we here? We are, any other public comments regarding this fire district? If not, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and bring it back to the commission for questions or, or a, if not, I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adopt resolution 23-2389 as presented by roll call vote.
Second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 23-2389 as presented by a roll call vote, and I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Wies?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye. That motion does carry four zero, and I will close that portion of the, of the hearing.
We'll move to public hearing number three, which is on Celine County and special district budgets for 2024. And I declare that that public hearing is open for public comment. And is there any one from the public who wishes to speak? Step right up, please. Yes, sir.
Russell Vedder, 2022 West North Street. I've lived there for 26 years now, and proposal is wanting to increase my property tax by over $1,000 this year, so I have one, at least 1,000 reasons why you can't do this. I'm wondering, when are you going to upgrade West North Street from the flood control dike to where it dead ends and possibly put an intersection stop sign at I-35?
Well, that wouldn't be from within the control of the county whatsoever on the I-135 portion of that, because you would, that would be a federal, or I assume it'd be a federal situation there. As far as the upgrading of North Street goes, I haven't heard anything about that. I have traveled that road a few times, I didn't realize it was in, in...
Oh, every time it rains, it gets so washboarded, and for the last 20 years, I ran an auto detail service on that dead end, Dirk County Road, which wasn't very profitable. And I complained about it 20 years ago. I was told, well, we just voted on the upgrades of county roads, in the next 10 years, yours wouldn't be, and yours isn't one of them. You could pay it and have it done yourself. Well, if I had all the taxes, tax money I've paid over the last 26 years, I could probably do that now.
I assume, to make sure that I'm clear on where you're talking about, that road leads out to Twin Oaks and hedges signs out there, that, that's the...
No, I think you're talking about Grand.
Okay, that is Grand.
Past UPS.
There you go. I guess what I would suggest, and we'll take it to note, but if you would call our road and bridge department and ask them to come out and visit with you and have a look at that, perhaps, and then they can come forward with a proposed plan for us to, for upgrades if so needed.
But as far as my personal property, and then the railroad tracks are right behind it, you know, it's noisy, I get dust off the road, you know, like I say, I've got 1,000 reasons why my personal property should not be, you know, take this massive increase, but... Oh, well, I basically came today because I wanted to know how to contest this increase on my personal property, was my question.
I guess I don't have, I mean, I'm sure...
I work with my hands, I'm not, I've always hated this paperwork, so to speak.
Do you have a response?
Sure. So, the appraiser's here as well, so he can correct me whatever I get wrong. So, as the commission is aware, the public, sometimes it's not crystal clear, so taxes are a function of two different things. One is the appraisal on your house, and the other is the budget that the commission sets. And so there are a couple of different opportunities throughout the year to affect that. So the first thing is the appraisal on your house. You get a notice in March, and you have an opportunity at that time to say, oh, I think it's appraised too high, or theoretically, you could protest if it's too low. Nobody ever does that. And, so...
With my hands, I'm not very good at the clinical.
So you would call the appraiser's office and schedule a hearing with them. That time period has now passed, so after they get done with all those hearings, they transmit that to the clerk, and then that's how this revenue neutral rate, it gets developed. This point is the budget, and so the budget is really based on all the things that the county funds. So the, the, the thing that, that you would talk about today would be, okay, we should reduce the budget, and that would also potentially reduce the tax burden. Then at the end of the process, after the commission sets whatever budget they want to set, you will get the actual tax bill from the county treasurer, and then at that time, you also have an opportunity to, what's, do what's called a payment under protest. And so you could, you could do that in December. So you have the opportunity in March, of today, and then you have the opportunity when you actually pay.
Okay, I see. So I, how, how do I put in my word about putting some of that budget towards upgrading the road?
And I might add that a good portion of our budget increase is roads. Specific roads, I don't think that's been identified at this point, and that's why I'm urging you, and I'm sure that our administration will make note of, of your request, to have that road looked at and see what needs to be done, and, and if, if you want, we can have someone contact you from the road and bridge department specifically.
That'd be fabulous.
So, all right, well, thank you for your concerns. Anyone else from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission, and do I close the, I close the portion of the public hearing at this point and bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adopt RFA 2023-173 as presented. Is that the wrong one?
I'm sorry, that's not what we're...
So, so there's actually no action to be taken on that public hearing. That is just the opportunity for the public, so then if you want to move to action items and then have any conversation about...
Okay. Okay, this is a little unclear to me here, but, so then that, closing the public portion of that hearing on the special district budgets for 2024 is over, and we will move to the action items. Item number one.
Adoption of 2024 budgets for Celine County and special districts with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
All right, we'll get on track here. Good morning, Phil.
So, good morning, commissioners. Yes, so the request before you today is to adopt the budgets for Celine County and the special districts, which includes all of the fire districts, Kip, and Fallen. This is the culmination of a process that we've been going through for several months now. You have received requests from departments, we've reviewed those requests with departments, and then I have prepared a recommendation, and then you heard appeals, one appeal from that recommendation. You chose to deny that appeal, and so the budget that is before you today is the same as what the county administrator recommended to you in June. And so that budget does unfortunately have the impact based on the assessed valuation, as we know it today, of increasing taxes. The assessed valuation went up 6.4-ish percent, and the budget goes up, the tax burden of the budget goes up 7.77%. The reasons for that are largely related, as I said earlier, to inflation. The chairman correctly noted that a significant portion of that is in road and bridge, so road and bridge, the costs for rock, for asphalt, for oil and gas, all those types of commodities that they use in, in great volumes have increased, as well as the budget does provide for a pay increase for employees, so that is in there as well. The other big thing that is a significant cost driver in the budget for '24 is the opening of the new jail, and so there are some additional positions associated with that. We have been able, over the past two years, to fund additional positions in preparation for the jail without raising the mill levy. It has actually gone down the last two years. This year, we were not able to do that. The combination of the, the road and bridge costs that we talked about and, and what's needed for staffing at the new jail just means that we're in a position where you all face a choice of doing those things and funding them or, or not doing them. So that is where we are, and I do have the full detail here. I'd be happy to go into any individual line item that any commissioner wishes to ask about, but at this point... But at this point, it is staff's recommendation that you adopt the budget for Celine County and for the special districts for 2024 as recommended.
At this point, I would ask, are there any commissioners who wish to further comment or have further clarification on anything? Anyone wish to speak?
I will say that we all pay taxes, and raising taxes can be painful. In due diligence, I believe this commission has whittled it as much out of this, out of what was presented and what was requested, and got it down to bare bones that we can continue to give the same quality of service. And this is the dollars it takes to do that. So I, I am in favor of voting yea for the budget that's being presented.
I want to make it clear that originally, I think it was clear back in March when we started, April, when we started our budget proposals, and ask our, our department heads to bring forth what they expected to be needed in 2024. That number amounted to, close to a 17% increase, if I recall. So we have taken that down. We, being the administrator and together with the commissioners, have whittled that down to a 7.7% increase, I think, for this proposed year. And, you know, with the increase for inflation for, for employees, and their increased pay increases and insurance, and we can go on and on. That's, we feel like this is the, the best proposal that we've been able to come up with. So at this point, I will ask for public comment, if there is any. Step right up.
Scott Bonds, 5001 East Mentor Road, Gypsum. I just wanted to clarify, I did not come here to protest or complain about my taxes going up. I just wanted to understand the process. And I'm sorry I didn't recognize this column here, proposed increases. But it's intermingled with figures for what I take to be the county as a whole. It doesn't say this is your personal rate, so, and your 7.7% figure helped me a lot. It's just a good general figure, and it seems to match what inflation has been. I just was hoping for clarification, that's all.
Well, thank you for your comments. You're welcome anytime. And these are the things, it would really be, and I know that people are busy, but, you know, we, what have we had, four or five budget meetings this year? And I don't, I can count on one hand the number of people total that's, that's appeared at those meetings. And so, and then, then they get surprised when they get this tax notice, so. But I don't like it either, I'm just like Commissioner Wees. I, I pay my taxes just like everyone else, and it is that situation. So again, are any other public comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, we'll try this again. I'll make a motion, we adopt RFA 2023-173 as presented.
Second the motion. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt RFA 2023-173 for the budget and special county districts budgets for 2024. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign, motion carries four zero. Thank you. We'll move to item number two.
Adoption of 2024 budget for Smolyn Township with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
So, good morning again, commissioners. This one is a little bit of a odd one, but we've done this for a couple of years now. So each of the townships is responsible for its own budget. Townships typically have a set of three officers that have a budget hearing, just like what you all have gone through this morning. Unfortunately, Smolyn Township has zero officers and has had zero officers for a couple of years now. And despite our best efforts to recruit volunteers, no one has stepped forward. So there's a choice between the county commission stepping in to this role and adopting a budget for them, or them not having a budget, which would have the impact of turning off the streetlights in the community of Mentor. So we are recommending once again for 2024 that you go ahead and adopt the budget for Smolyn Township in lieu of their township officers. We, I will say, staff does not intend for this to happen again in '24. The county clerk has been in contact with neighboring townships about possibility of merger. I think we, we need to be out of this business because the townships need to take responsibility for the things that they want to have in their own township. But for now, the clerk's office has prepared the budget and would recommend adoption.
All right, any comments or questions from commissioners? I think Mr. Smith Haynes has covered it pretty well, and that is that no citizens have stepped up to be willing to serve their township, and that's why we're doing what we're doing today. So is there any public comment?
There are five areas in the state of Kansas you don't have any jurisdiction over. So you could turn off the electricity to the city of Smolyn, that area. There are five states, some of these states are in eastern and northern Kansas. You don't have any jurisdiction, you don't provide any utility to them. It's called reservations.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt RFA 2023-170 as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt RFA 2023-170 as presented. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero. That will do it for our action items for today. We'll move into the informational items.
Commissioners' comments?
Any commissioners have any comments? I'd like to make one comment. I wasn't here last week, I was out of town. I saw in the minutes, in reviewing the minutes, that I was criticized for not allowing a citizen to speak at the previous meeting. And there's protocol to be followed there, as far as I'm concerned. We have a public forum where our citizens may speak, and the gentleman did not speak at that. We also have a portion of our meeting on action items where citizens can speak. And it has long been the standing policy of this board that citizens can't just get up and talk whenever you would have a meeting that's all over the place. And that was the reason that that person wasn't allowed to speak at the end of the meeting. He'd had an opportunity and didn't take that opportunity. So as chairman, I decided not to allow that at that time. So that's, having been said, we'll move to item number two.
Announcements?
No announcements? All right, and our agenda items for next, next week's meeting are, are printed there. And do your homework. I would take a motion for adjournment unless someone has something to bring up.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we adjourn today's meeting. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you for attending.